Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the regular meeting for March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three of the Carolin County Planning Commission to order. By way of introductions, to my far left is Mr. J.D. Young, representing Reedy Church. To my left is Dr. Carol Horton, representing Port Royal. My name is Bob Schwartz. I represent the Bowling Green District. To my right is Mr. Purcell Minor of the Mattupenai District. To his right is Mr. George Weaver, representing Madison. And on the very end is Mr. Richard Williams, representing Weston Caroline. For staff tonight, we have Mr. Craig Pennington, our planner. Mr. Leon Hughes, our zoning administrator. Uh, Mr. Max Helvin, representing the County Attorney's Office. And of course, Mr. Mike Fincham, our Director of Bracket. I want to give a thanks to Ms. Priscilla Void for handling the IT portion tonight for the audio and video transmission. And at this time, I would invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of Our Country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no minutes prepared from previous meetings to be approved at this time. We will have a public hearing, and I'll ask Mr. Pennington to read the protocol for the public hearing at this time, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Purpose of a public hearing is for Carolin County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression, position, and opinion from citizens of Carolin County. Public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions nor debates, and all statements should be addressed to the Chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants or representatives of the applicant will be allowed fifteen minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. All comments are to be pertinent to the issue being considered. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only the issues pertinent to matters advertised for the public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or representative of the applicant will be allowed ten minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you, sir. Our first item of business is SPEX zero-one, twenty twenty-three, Mulberry Place Special Events Facility. Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant's requesting approval for a special exception permit for a special events facility located at Tax Map Parcel 72-a-2A and 72-a-2. The event area would take place on nine point seven-five acres on the Tax Map seventy-two-a-2A while being served by an ingress egress easement through Parcel seventy-two-a-2 from Sparta Road. The applicant is propos- sorry, the applicant is proposing to allow events Monday through Thursday, eight AM to eight PM, and Friday through Sunday, eight AM to midnight, and host up to two hundred and fifty people. The parcel is to be utilized for the events as in- is encompassed on all boundaries by Parcel seventy-two-a-2, which is owned by the applicant and will continue to be farmed. The applicant does not plan to construct any other structures and will utilize a tent for the events. The applicant will direct all music inwards towards the property, provide security personnel, and plan to utilize bathroom trailers for waste disposal to be hauled off-site. This will require a pump and haul permit from the Board of Supervisors. Following conditions were suggested by staff. Screening shall be provided and maintained in the form of a double row of evergreen landscaping around the parking areas. Parking areas shall be screened from Sparta Road. Screening shall be provided and maintained in the form of a- I'm sorry. All outdoor activities associated with events shall be contained within the nine point seven-five acres as shown on the GDP. Amplified noise sounds shall be limited to the barn or immediately abutting there, too. Depicted on the GDP, noise sources shall be directed away from neighboring properties. All noise and sound shall comply with Chapter sixty-eight of the Carolin County Code, including maximum DVA, maximum decibel limits established for the Rural Preservation Zoning District, which shall not be exceeded. This special exception is issued solely to Robert and Ada Carruthers doing business as Mulberry Place and is non-transferable. The permit shall be limited to weddings, receptions, birthday parties, and similar receptions. No festivals or ticketed events shall be permitted. This permit shall be reviewed by the Board of Supervisors three years after the date of approval of the site plan. There should be no parking permitted outside of the area identified on the development plan approved of this permit, which shall be located on the site plan. Delivery of food, tents, chairs, and other supplies will not occur prior to nine AM nor after five PM the day before an event. It shall be removed no earlier than nine AM, no later than five PM the day after an event. The hours of operation shall be restricted to nine through s- nine AM to seven PM Monday through Wednesday, nine AM to ten PM Thursday, nine AM to midnight Friday and Saturday, and nine-thirty AM to eight PM on Sunday, including the needed for- including the need for setup. Trash receptacles shall be screened from view of neighboring properties and disposed of properly within forty-eight hours of an event. Overnight parking of vehicles must be in designated parking spots and shall be removed within forty-eight hours. Any exterior lighting used to illuminate the event shall be source-shielded and downward-facing, as so not to exceed point-five-foot candles at the venue boundary. One security person shall be employed per one hundred guests. One designated person shall be employed per one hundred guests for traffic control for ingress and egress to the facility, which may be the same person providing security. The holder of this permit is responsible for ensuring that all required licenses, permits, inspections are obtained, including but not limited to health, building, alcoholic beverages, and business licenses for each event. A maximum of thirty events shall be permitted in a calendar year. The maximum number of guests attending any one event shall be one fifty. A minor site plan in accordance with Article fifteen, Section fourteen of the Carolin County zoning ordinance shall be submitted and approved by the county. The development and use of the property shall be consistent with development plans submitted and approved with his application and the minor site plan. The event venue boundaries shall be delineated on the site plan and clearly identified on the ground with approval with appropriate notification for attendees not to be proceed beyond the boundary. The permit holder shall maintain and make available to the planning department a schedule of events, including date, type of event, and the anticipated and actual attendance. An onsite sewer disposal system approved by the Virginia Department of Health shall be installed.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Is the applicant present? Come forward, Mr. Carruthers, if you please, sir. Please state your name and your voting district, please.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Robert Carruthers. Um, Mulberry Place is actually located in the Bowling Green District uh, because we're right on the line. I live in the Milford District, which is right across the road from- yeah. Um, Craig kinda took my speech, so I'm not gonna read everything I wrote. Uh, we're full-time farmers. Uh, I've been a resident of the county twenty-six years. Um, we do continue to farm, and we farm all the land around the ten acres that we're speaking of. Mulberry Place was established in eighteen-twenty-seven. It's currently a four-hundred-and-sixty-eight-acre working farm. The main house and the outbuildings are located on the ten-acre separate tract. Um, we own all of the land around it, the other four-hundred-and-fifty-eight acres. Uh, Craig pretty much laid out what our goal is and our plan, so be happy to take any questions.
So you do not own the house where Dr. Trey House?
No, we own the house, too.
Okay.
But that's on a separate ten-acre tract. Mike Treyhaus subdivided that ten years ago, I guess. And um, so it's three tracts of land on that property. It's a fifteen-acre lot, which is in the subdivision. Um, I don't even know the name of- I guess it's a subdivision, uh, right across from New Market. And then, uh, it's a ten-acre tract, which the house is located on, and the balance of the farmland, which is four-hundred-and-fifty-eight acres. But yes, we do own the house, the ten-acre piece.
Beautiful house, uh-
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been on the inside. In fact, your home also has a very historic value.
And we wanna keep the historic part of it there. I'm not proposing building any buildings. Uh, this is kind of a added revenue thing we wanna do for the farm. Uh, it's gonna be a very, uh, country-esque wedding venue, be tents, table, chairs, et cetera. Uh, I have no intention of building a wedding house or venue or what have you. As far as the parking goes, I did say- heard Craig mention something about parking. Uh, we're located a mile off the road from Sparta Road. So I don't see where we have any issues there as far as, um, nobody has any line of sight to the ten acres.
It would take an artillery shell to get to your house from Sparta Road.
No, that's a good chunk going through there. And I encourage anybody, if you have any questions, I'll be happy for you to see the property or whatever, but we're located a mile off the main road.
Alright, sir. Uh, if you will, I will open the public hearing on it now. After which you will have ten minutes to respond to any concerns the citizens might have or any questions that the Commission might have.
Okay.
Can, uh, Mr. Chair, can I have a quick question? Because I've been to the property, too, and in the home. Uh, and it is a beautiful, historic place. So the venue is located around the house?
Yes, ma'am. The house is-
I just wanna make sure I'm looking at-
Yes, the house is sitting on the ten acres.
Okay.
Yeah. And the venue will be located inside the ten acres. The rest of it's just farm fields.
I notice other buildings around the house. You could be using them, too?
No, they're just outbuildings. Some of it's a, uh, the- I don't know how familiar you are, but Mike had a dentist office there. Uh, that's still there. It's a smokehouse there and, uh, outdoor kitchen, but nothing that we would be using for the wedding venue.
That's the main house, correct?
Well, all we're gonna use on the main house, oh, and tension is just for a changing area, for the, um, bridal party to come in and change, and the grooms would change downstairs. So we're not intending on having weddings in the house.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Carruthers.
Thank you.
We'll now open the public hearing on this issue. Public hearing for SPEX zero-one, twenty twenty-three is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter?
Good evening. Um, I'm Faith McFadden. Um, I am in what I believe is the Mattupenai District. Um, admittedly, I have not had a chance to read over this project, um, but in general, I support, um, bringing growth like this to our county. Um, I think there's a lot of ways we can do growth. We all know it's coming. Um, but things like wedding venues, um, where people can come and, um, bring tourism into our county, and it's also their home, and they love it, and they're protecting all the things they love. They are making money at their house. They're bringing traffic into our county. Um, with any luck, maybe we'll get some bed and breakfast popping up, and you'll have people staying overnight instead of coming to a wedding in Caroline and staying in Ashland or Spazlania. Um, I think those are the kind of things I'd like to see in this county. I haven't read about that project to say much more than that. Um, but I do support those kind of businesses, and from what I've seen so far, y'all have done a pretty good job of evaluating things, so as long as they're doing things by the book and, you know, taking care of the things we care about in this county, um, I don't see why we wouldn't support it. I think that's under three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Final call. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing no one come forward, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Carruthers, would you care to respond or make any additional comments? You have that opportunity now?
No, I'm good.
Commissioners, anyone have any further questions?
I have some questions of staff. So, uh, Mr. Pennington, is- is this our fourth wedding venue? I'm thinking there's three others.
Uh, there are four permitted right now.
Four, so this is our fifth?
This would be the fifth.
Okay, so are- are the times- we- we've discussed this before about the times and the regulations, kinda making them consistent, as consistent as possible? You know, because these venues are popping up throughout our county. And I don't have, you know, the copy in front of me of- of the regulations of the other places. But you all staff took that in consideration, correct? So they're pretty close?
Yes, ma'am. They are copied from the previous wedding facility that we threw two months ago.
Okay, because, uh, and I might have missed it because I didn't see anything about overnight parking.
Uh, there is a condition there on overnight parking that cars would need to be removed within forty-eight hours of the event.
Okay. And that's consistent. I remember that's something we talked about with the other venues. I believe that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Chair, I love this location. I mean, it's out of the way. It's the kind of place that you could put this in your backyard, and you would not even know it was there. So I have to say, I've gone into this facility and looked at it very carefully. From my business back, I say, I see no reason why we should not allow this to- thank you.
Any further? Then I would like to make a motion where a special exemption request for- Let me find it again. I've lost it in this congressional record I have up here. Uh, SPX zero-one, twenty twenty-three, for Mulberry Place Special Events Facility appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan and future land use map. And whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of this request, I recommend that SPEX zero-one, twenty twenty-three be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second-
With- with the conditions, correct?
With the conditions as attached.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Weaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. This will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with our recommendation of approval. Ladies and gentlemen, I may- meant to make an announcement, uh, first thing. If there is anyone here regarding text amendment zero-one, twenty twenty-three regarding the floodplain and the FEMA plan, I have been advised at this meeting that the matter is going directly to the Board of Supervisors as it is in county ordinance, and is the Planning Commission is not the proper venue to start the proceedings. So everyone is welcome to stay, uh, but if your sole intent was for the FEMA floodplain, uh, it's not gonna be coming before us. So I thank you for that. Alright, uh, public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Uh, Mr. Fincham, if you please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, your next public hearing, uh, is a public hearing to amend, uh, Chapter Eight and the Carmel Church Land Use Map that accompanies Chapter Eight of the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment involves several elements. Element number one would be to expand the, uh, current boundary of the growth area from the, uh, westernmost portion of the growth area out along Jericho Road to Hewlett Road, uh, and to designate, uh, that area for a mixture of future development related to planned innovation, research, and technology districts, as well as to specify specific areas, uh, around, uh, Mount Erie Road uh, as areas for the development of planned industrial, uh, innovation, research, and technology uses. The second amendment, uh, oh, and it would also allow for the extension of public water and sewer facilities to- to that area. The second component of this amendment would be to designate, uh, an area currently within the boundaries of the- of the growth area on the east side, uh, around Drybridge Road uh, for the same PERT or Planned Innovation Research and Technology District uses. The purpose of that amendment would be to support, uh, current development with the MCD property uh, related to- to their technology park, uh, that they are developing. The third component of this amendment would be, uh, to redesignate the area uh, roughly between, uh, Interstate ninety-five, Route one, Route two-oh-seven, and the Hanover County line as an urban development area. The boundaries of this area include, uh, the project known as Carmel Church Station, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors, uh, over ten years ago. Under the urban development area does, um, uh, authorization in the state code, it requires those areas to be reviewed, uh, and redesignated as appropriate, uh, every ten years. So this amendment would include the redesignation of Carmel Church Station as an urban development area. The fourth component would be, uh, the include the inclusion of language in Chapter Eight of the Comprehensive Plan to identify, uh, the new planned innova- uh, Innovation Research and Technology District, which would then be the basis of the future amendment to the zoning ordinance uh, under the planned development regulations, uh, for that district. Finally, uh, we would be, um, uh, amending, well, I've already said that. We- we'd be amending the land use plan in Chapter Eight to include all those changes that, uh, we have discussed here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, you have any questions at this time?
Uh, Ms.- Mr. Fincham, uh, the- the first three plots, three areas of land you were talking about, were you talking about on our map where the blue stripes are?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought. Just wanted to make sure.
Blue stripes, and there are also an area with, uh, do- uh, a dotted pattern uh, over in the- the western, um, side of the county towards o- off of Jericho Road. You have properties that are- both have a hash pattern as well as a- a dotted pattern. So that would be the new area.
What color is that on this map? Is that the white?
These are dotted?
It's a white background with a dark blue or black, uh, dots, dotted pattern.
Six oh-one. Oh, six oh-one to seven hundred.
Be- be to the left side of the map. There's a new area. And it's the map on the back page, this-
Okay.
Yes, the- the first map is the current Comprehensive Plan map for that area.
And, uh, and the train station is-
And a blue one.
The- the future train station is within that area bounded by Interstate ninety-five, Route one, two-oh-seven. It's the, uh, light tan shaded area.
Okay.
What's in the red? The red?
Um, properties identified as red are for commercial development. So that would be, uh, com- that would be consistent with our B-one zoning district, uh, or our, uh, planned shopping center district.
Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, um, design development involved with this? In other words, um, I see big areas, lots of land, um. Is there anything proposed on these pieces of land, or is it just, you know, proposal, I'd like to have that rezoned or whatever?
With- within the, um, it- the area to the west of the current boundaries, there is a development proposal that's subject to a public hearing later this evening, which would be the, um, uh, VAALCO rezoning application.
Okay, so that's the one between six fifty-eight and seven hundred. Is that the area?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And the other item is a- is a rezoning application. Um, so while it is appropriate to- to- to hear both of those public hearings, um, you do- do need to conduct those hearings as separate matters. So you need sequentially, you need to consider the comp- at least have the public hearing and take your public input on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment itself. Um, you can, from that point, um, either recommend approval, recommend denial, defer action. You can defer action to a later date. You could defer action until after the public hearing for the rezoning application. Um, so you have a number of options available to you.
Mr. Chair, based on what was just put in front of me, I think we should defer this until we know what we're doing with the zoning.
But I think you need to have the public hearing. You can then defer action after the public hearing, if you desire.
Okay, so make a motion for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. Public hearing regarding the- Good gosh, my, I'm getting lost in papers up here again. The twenty-thirty Comprehensive Plan Amendment is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter?
Good evening. I'm Faith McFadden, um, Mattupenai District. I agree with your, uh, decision or hopefully the decision to defer this. I think those maps are really confusing in the packet. Um, I know applicants a lot of times will put them up here. Um, so I- I can't speak for you all. I can only speak for myself, but sitting back here, I think it'd be helpful if we do have another public hearing, if we can see that up here. Um, when I was reading about it, I thought some of that stuff was already approved because I was looking at our, um, whatever you could- the- in the Comprehensive Plan, I think, Chapter Eight, the land use map, and I could see that there. We all had done all those things. And reading about the, um, residents that had come together and the boards and all the things that had come up with those decisions, I, um, naively thought that that was already an approval. I, um, naively thought that that was already an approved thing. So I was a little confused with some of that to begin with. And I think in general, it would help us all, um, speak to it better if we had some larger maps with, um, I'd say easier to identify things geographically. Like we all know where ninety-five and Route one is and rivers and some big things like that. So just give us a big enough picture to look at so that when we're trying to speak within three minutes and, um, relate to everyone how we feel about it and hope that that influences your ability to make an informed decision about it, we all at least have a good map to look at because it can get really confusing. Trying to read through this stuff is just a regular person that lives in Caroline County, let alone somebody trying to make a decision about growth for the future of our county. Um, thank you for your time and I appreciate you hearing me, uh, hearing me out this evening.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter?
Good evening, Chairman Schwartz and planning commissioners. My name is Mary Hodge. I live in the Bowling Green District. Um, sometimes I wonder, thinking about this, which came first, the chicken or the egg? Um, the data center or the rezoning for it? I have been hearing inklings of battery storage facilities and I feel like sometimes the planning office is almost like Oz. You don't know what's going on behind the door until several years later, the flying monkeys come out and we either have solar projects or data centers, um, invading our rural lands. Um, there is a slogan that was coined several months ago. Um, it states, "Don't California my Virginia." It was coined in the context of removing Virginia from the clean energy standards that had been enacted by California, of all places, many years ago. Well, my slogan is, "Don't Spotsylvania my Caroline." If I were, if I were a resident of those, um, bounded in the Jericho and Hewlett Road area, I would be up in arms about this. And I feel it is a rash decision to fast track this huge boundary adjustment to our well-planned comprehensive plan, thereby changing our rural agricultural lands into a planned research and technology development area. Most people in that area don't even know how to operate a computer. Um, the Carmel Church Community Plan was developed over the course of two years with extensive input by the community. And I feel to fast track this futurist, futuristic plan into our rural atmosphere would create a very different type of community that we residents neither envision nor want. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodge. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yes, sir. I'm Kermit Davis and, uh, li, uh, own property in the Reedy Church District, uh, used to be the Madison District. And I am totally against it. Actually, my property is, and within that, that's going to be approved for the data center. And I'm totally against it. I feel like people bought that land because it was in rural preservation.
All right, Mr. Davis, this is solely on the comprehensive plan amendment.
Yes, sir.
Not the rezoning.
Well, I'm against the, the amendment.
Okay.
But the rezoning's in there, correct?
No, sir, not on this item.
Okay. Well, I'm against it and I think, Mr., okay, well, I think Mr. Webber is correct. I think we need to figure out what's going to be done with the, the rezoning before we even get into this. So that's my opinion. I'm against any, changing anything to do with rural Caroline County. I agree, let's don't change Caroline to Spotsylvania. We don't need that, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
I'm Mark Atkinson from the Childsburg area. Um, I was, I came here tonight to talk about the redistricting and now I hear there's so much more going on. I'm pretty well informed about things that are happening in Caroline County. I didn't know anything about this and I bet there are a lot of other citizens that didn't know about this. And I think you should take some time and make sure that everybody knows and everybody understands what you all are planning.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Karen Collins and, uh, I am a native of Caroline County. So I've got, uh, I've witnessed forty years of the county's growth, over forty years of the county's growth and development. Um, and I currently live, um, in an area that is being proposed through this amendment to fall under future, um, development for this, uh, research corridor. And, uh, while I understand, um, that things change, a change of this magnitude to a comprehensive plan, um, should not be considered at this point. Um, it, it's just, in, in reading through what I have read, um, and, and just like the gentleman before me, uh, it's really become news to me very recently that any of this was even being proposed and I live in one of the areas. Um, so I don't feel like there's been good communication from the county whatsoever. Um, but, um, again, a change of this magnitude, I mean, this should be years of studies, um, looking at natural, cultural, socioeconomic, socioeconomic impacts. The previous comprehensive plan, um, specifically the Carmel Church Community Plan, took years of planning with very extensive community and resident and staff involvement. Mr. Fincham himself was one of the staff members who spent years articulating a very well-thought-out plan. And this isn't just some willy-nilly change. This is a huge change to that plan. It goes completely against that plan. I, I could sit here with the Carmel Church plan and I, I don't, I should have counted the number of times that the terms rural preservation, preserving our rural community was the key element of that plan. And that to, this amendment totally destroys that. And from what I understand, had no community involvement whatsoever. So in my opinion, tonight, it should be, uh, although I understand there are other parts to this amendment that don't include the Jericho Road, um, portion, which is what I'm speaking directly to. Um, it, it seems to me that this just needs to be completely tabled and there is way more planning that needs to go into this with community involvement before any decision should be made. Um, specifically in the Carmel Church plan from two thousand and seven, which I'm referring to, rezoning, um, the area, um, to be rezoned is supposed to be permanently protect, protected because it's designated as rural preservation, which is again, why I chose to live in that area. Because I looked at a county-approved plan that said, "This is permanently protected as rural preservation." Um, and many times I talk.
Yes, ma'am, your time has expired. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kevin Collins. Uh, I usually get way too close to the microphone and yell into it, so I'll try and refrain from that. Um, I want to touch on what my wife just was expanding on and read directly from the twenty thirty comprehensive plan for rural land use within the county. Caroline County has extor, historically recognized the importance of protecting rural lands through its land use, resource protection and growth management policies in the comprehensive plan. The plan recognizes agricultural and forester use as the preferred land use in rural areas. The conservation of land for residential development is the greatest threat to those areas. The pressure on agriculture land requires a proactive approach to rural preservation. Other land use should be evaluated against their support of and impact of the desired agriculture, forester uses so that the preservation of rural lands is assured. The scale and intensity of land uses, excuse me, should be carefully evaluated and performance standard used to ensure they are appropriate to the rural landscape. Uses that cannot be submission sufficiently mitigated or conflict with planning objectives should be discouraged. Um, we built our house based on this area being zoned the way it is. Uh, I don't know if any of you have ever had the chance to kayak or spend any time on the North Anna River, but it is one of the last untouched pieces of waterway where you can get in at Hewlett Road and go to the crossing at Route one and forget where you are. You don't see industrial parks. You don't see commercial buildings. You don't see anything. You see nature, uh, bald eagles, white, whitetail deer, you know, largemouth, smallmouth bass. And you're talking about rezoning all this land so it could be used for any sort of rezoning purposes. Um, so the comprehensive plan should not be touched. We're not even six and a half years out from twenty thirty, which is when the plan was designed for. Um, it's a very well-thought-out plan. I understand times change, but we've got six and a half years to reevaluate doing anything to these changes that are already, uh, being talked about here. So I thank you for your time and I oppose any amendment to the comprehensive plan as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Billy Smith. My background is in education with a doctorate from UVA in the area of administration, supervision and research. I'm here tonight and I want to make sure that I am addressing you on the right issue. I'm sorry, I do not have an agenda. I just have it off of my phone. But I want to make sure it's in the right time and the right place. I'm addressing you tonight about the proposal for the zoning, for the data center. The reason is, it backs up.
Doctor, that, that would be at a later public hearing?
I know, but I just want to make sure. That's why I'm saying it, to make sure that it is that. And with that, it looks, it appears from what I'm hearing that I was unaware of is a change in the comprehensive plan. Now, if there's a change in the comprehensive plan before you're speaking towards a change in the zoning of the property, I am speaking now to say that I would have concern that the plan would be changed in order for it to be in line with the change in zoning. And I do want to state that I live on Hewlett Road in Hanover County. So the property is adjoining by way of the river. And with that, without saying what I was planning to say if need be, the impact of that. I certainly understand your need of wanting to get everything lined up, but that is the concern. I would hope that there would be more interactions with the public, with Caroline County about what you're doing before it's put in place into the comp plan. Thank you very much. And I would like to say your staff has been most helpful.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
My name is Gray Williams. I'm from Reedy Church District. And I didn't come here tonight and plan to say anything, but sitting here listening, I found, I find that Caroline County or someone in Caroline County, and I don't think it's this board, has been very irresponsible in letting the constituents of their county know what they're doing. This sounds like somebody's sneaking around the back door, trying to get something in place so that they can do something. And they're going to try to change the entire reflection of what that part of Caroline County is as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned. And I think it is very irresponsible of you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Masine Williams. I've been a resident of Caroline County for over seventy years. I'm a native and I lived almost all of my life in the, in the Jericho Road area. I now live on Hewlett Road. I chose it because it is rural. I have turkeys in my backyard. I have deer. I do not want to destroy that. We have quiet river going down. The river is in good condition. And I see you planning lots of extra people coming in with lots of things going on and changing it will destroy that. Please keep what you had in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Final call. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Gary Prophet. I'm in the Reedy Church District and I live on Mount Erie Drive, right in the middle of where all this is being talked about. And the information passed out has been almost zero. That piece of property there is some of the prettiest land in Caroline. It has the only cypress trees this far north and west in Virginia. It also has numerous historical cemeteries. This is not the place. The type of building and, and changes belong along the interstate where it's already ugly. Nobody wants to ruin this beautiful place of land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter? Final call. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is closed. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a ten-minute recess. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. The meeting will come back to order, please. Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir.
Staff, do we have any questions from staff? Did I say staff, do we have any questions? I thought that's what I said.
I wasn't going to say anything.
Well, word salad, I mean, come on, give me a break. Now, if you talk to yourself, we have issues. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions, I do, you closed the public hearing, correct? So-
Yes.
So, I do have a comment, because I realize it is, and I always try to work with my constituents, because I realize it is confusing nowadays to obtain all this information. You know, back in the day, and my family's from Caroline, so all of us up here take everything very seriously. But back in the day, you could hear about it either from your neighbor or lots of times in the newspaper. But we don't have all these newspapers floating around nowadays. And so, in order to be informed about this stuff, which can really get confusing, because it is a lot of information, you just have to nowadays go on the internet, and which can be confusing, because you have to jump around from site to site navigating to find out what's going on. The information is always available, it's just much harder to find, I guess nowadays on the internet. And the second thing in regard to talking about the comprehensive plan, because I live in a rural preservation area, and I like rural preservation areas. But I'd like to remind people the definition of that. We cannot stop people from building houses in rural preservation. Most of it in Caroline in rural preservation is 10-acre lots. Some of it less, some of it more. I believe this is a 10-acre lot area, and we're talking about over 800 acres, correct, Mr. Fincham?
When you get to the next item on the agenda, that is correct.
Yes. So, you know, we cannot stop lots, you know, we cannot stop lots and lots of houses from going in that area. I just want people to always be aware of that. By law, you know, people can build a house on a 10-acre lot as long as it perks, and then in lots of areas, they can make a cutoff for a family member. So, we talk a lot about, you know, because I live on a small farm in the area. We talk a lot about, you know, having chickens and loving the beauty of the area and the wildlife and all. I just really love that. But just be aware, we cannot, in rural preservation areas, we cannot stop the houses from coming in on 10-acre lots. I just, you know, wanted to remind people of that, because people always say it's difficult to understand what's going on. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Mr. Fincham, there seems to be a lot of concern among our citizens regarding do notice. What has staff or the county done to make sure that notification to the utmost of our ability?
Right, we did the notice, notice was done in accordance with the state code requirements, okay? And understandably, those are minimum requirements. So, the comprehensive plan amendment was advertised in the paper twice as required by the state code, actually four times, because if the planning commission will remember, it was advertised for public hearing back in January of this year, and the public hearing was not held at that time. So that notice is published in the paper in accordance with the code requirements.
As well as on the county website, I believe? Or was it?
I'd have to check on the website. It does go on the website when the packets are posted to the website, so yes, sir. Under that scenario, it's also on the website.
So newspaper notification essentially is the bare minimum, and that's what has been accomplished?
Yes, sir. The Fredericksburg Freelance Star.
Maybe we need to start subscribing to the freelance, I mean. Thank you, Mr. Fincham, I appreciate it. Commissioners, we have two paths that we can follow. One is deferral. The other is to make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan amendment with a modification. And I would propose that that modification be to exclude the expansion of area west of the present comprehensive boundary. Looking at your maps, that would be the striped area, appears to be black stripes, around 720, 658, 601 through the river, and then to the marshland, and it is still west of the expansion boundary for the Carmel Church Station. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, that means that anything, as we look at the map, okay, we get east, west, north, and south, okay? Anything to the left side of 657?
That is correct.
Would be deferred.
Excluded.
Excluded, okay, excluded. Now, do we defer it, or do we deny it?
Well, our options are to make a recommendation of denial for the entire amendment. We can recommend approval with modifications, or we can defer it.
Well, I mean, I look at it very carefully, and I just think the biggest problem is anything to the left side of 657 is where I have agita with, okay? I think the amount of land has been taken in there with no set proposal. I think at this particular time, I would, I would would like to modify this plan that's in front of us and eliminate everything that is to the left side of 657. I'm talking about these nice lines and little dots and everything else, okay? Everything that is to the left side of 657, I would like to deny that. Now, I don't know how exactly I'm going to do that, okay? Do I make a motion to recommend a change in the comprehensive plan, but eliminate those things?
Sir, you can either make the motion, or I can make the motion.
Well, okay.
Mr. Weaver, I think there's already a motion on the floor from Mr. Schwartz to that effect.
Okay, to eliminate everything that's to the left side of 657, is that correct?
To the west of 657.
All right, so that's the west side, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mike, I don't know, north, east, south, and west.
I understand, I understand. So I think you have a motion on the floor. I think the appropriate action would be either to second that motion and then have more discussion, or if there is no second to the motion, then a substitute motion can be proposed.
Okay, so Mr. Schwartz, you made a motion?
Yes, sir, I didn't use the verbiage in its entirety. I can do so to legitimize the motion, if you would like.
Please do, and I will second that motion, I'm going.
Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good planning, land use, and zoning practices warrants the approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. I recommend that the comprehensive plan amendment be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval with the following modification: the exclusion of the expansion of area west of the present comprehensive boundary. Is there a second?
I second.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded by two commissioners. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Aye, abstain.
One abstention. Five ayes, one abstention. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving forward, rezoning 062022, Valco Caroline County LLC. Mr. Hughes?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. The applink for this case is asked if the commission would consider a five-minute recess to contemplate their actions.
Yes, sir. The commission will be in recess for five minutes? Yes, sir, the commission will be in recess for five minutes. I'm sorry. Mr. Fincham, RZ zero six.
Office buildings and data centers. Next slide. The subject parcels are outlined in red and are accessed via Mount Airy Road or Mount Airy Drive, about seven hundred. The subject parcels are identified as tax parcels eighty-one A, one oh nine A, eighty A for preservation. This page is from the applicant's GDP that shows the developable areas on the parcels in the light green. The proposed internal spine road in red, I mean, in black map. And a cemetery highlighted in blue is at the end of the proposed road. There are four potential substations on the parcel which are identified in a red color on the northern portion of the property and then two on the southern portion of the property on either side of the cemetery there in the image. The purple lines highlights the environmental sensitive areas which are, includes deep slopes, RMA and RPAs, and are along the water bodies. The north Anna River runs along the southern and western boundary of the project area. To date, the applicant has not identified a phasing plan that would note where on the property the project may begin. Although the applicant's proffer statement, which I'll address later, notes that there is a phasing proposal. This is an illustrative image provided by the applicant that offers a speculative building configuration and how potentially, how many buildings could be built on the property. Let me be clear, the applicant is not committing to this image that you see before you. This image represents the possibility of twenty-eight two-story buildings, about two million square feet per building. This image represents the building coverage of about five percent of the land area with less than one acre of wetland disturbance. The applicant has submitted a proffer statement that sets limits on the permitted uses and how the site will be developed. This proffer includes a commitment to phasing, although the GDP nor the proffer statement are explicit to a phasing plan. The proffers include bulk standards to include height and setbacks. The setbacks are a minimum of forty feet to be increased as a building height increases. The general standards proffer addresses building orientations, screening, and architectural features, the screening of utility and mechanical equipment, and the minimizing impacts in the environmentally sensitive areas. The proffers also offer to conduct a noise study of any equipment that would be within four hundred feet of any existing residential dwelling. Fencing, lighting, and parking are also included in the proffer statement. The transportation proffer notes future traffic studies will be conducted as required by VDOT at the time of site plan submissions. Dedication of the internal spine road to public use. The proffers also include a commitment to enter into an agreement with the county for the provision of and installation of water and wastewater. As noted in the staff report, staff has raised concerns with several other proffers. We have discussed the concerns with the applicant's representative, and she has agreed to address these issues raised by staff revising the proffer document prior to a board of supervisors' public hearing. This is an image of the county's future land use map. The project area at right now is not in accordance with the current comprehensive plan as it is outside of the primary growth area, an area designated for rural preservation, which has been designated and intended to provide areas to encourage economic development and to preserve agricultural land for the viability of the county's agricultural sector. These areas are intended to encourage and promote the orderly and responsible growth of agricultural production activities, including crops, livestock, dairy, poultry, and related activities that are harmonious with the agricultural operations. And I should note, in the first sentence there, we talked about the encouragement of economic development. That is speaking to agrarian economic development as noted later on in the paragraph. The red circle notes the location of the project in relation to the growth boundary. It's identified as the site on the map. The companion, comp plan amendment you just acted on was a companion to this case. We have received thirteen letters of opposition to date, nine were in the packet, and four were received today. The Virginia Department of Transportation has received the GDP and will provide additional comments once their review is complete. Comments from county staff were also noted in the staff report. At this point, this concludes my presentation. The applicant's representative is here and also has a presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Hughes at this time? None at this time, Mr. Hughes, thank you. The applicant's representative wish to address?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Anne Neil Cosby, and I'm an attorney with Wire Gill, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Valco Caroline County LLC, which is a subsidiary of Tract. We obviously understand that the comprehensive plan amendment that is a companion and necessary for this application was just recommended for denial before the Board of Supervisors, but we're here, and so we would like to do our presentation and give, put the information for the commission and mostly for the public. I mean, the commission obviously has acted, but the public is here, and they came out to understand what this proposal is all about, so we'd like to go ahead and and give our full presentation so that that information is there and make ourselves available. If this moves forward to the Board of Supervisors for ultimate action, you know, we're here, we're available to answer questions. You know, we want to be responsive to the community and, you know, provide as much information as we can. So we're very disappointed, obviously, but again, we are, we still believe in the project, and so we will move forward and again, want to provide information. My purpose is really to introduce Grant Van Ruin, who is the CEO of Tract. He'll give a presentation that provides sort of an overview of who Tract is. I mean, they're new to the county, they would be a new corporate, you know, participant in Caroline if it were ultimately approved. And he will give the overview of the company and of the proposal, and some discussion about other portions of the comprehensive plan, which speak to economic development. I mean, the comprehensive plan isn't only land use. Obviously, that's an integral important part of any comprehensive plan, but there are also various other very important sections, economic development, infrastructure. You know, how to get critical infrastructure throughout the county, and this application, you know, would do so much towards those goals of the comp plan. So we'll speak a little bit about that because that still is very relevant, we think, here. And so then I am available to answer any questions related to specific proffers. I would like to thank Mike Fincham and Leon Hughes, who obviously is new to the county but jumped in and has been working with us on the proffers for this project. We've been working with the county actually for over nine months. So we've worked really hard on the zoning and on the water supply issues with Joey Sheville, the director of, the superintendent of utilities, and with county admin, and everybody's just been, you know, very involved, so we appreciate that. I don't know how many questions you'll have about proffers given, you know, the prior action, and I understand, you know, what your ultimate action here will likely be. But again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk to you, and most importantly, talk to the people that are behind me and otherwise interested, so thank you, and I will turn it over to Grant, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Commissioners, my name is Grant Van Ruin, I'm the CEO of Tract. Tract is a data center development company that is headquartered in Denver, Colorado, and has engaged in data center development in multiple states in the U.S., all of which constitute multi-billion dollar projects. First thing I would observe is this is a company and a management team that is deeply experienced in the craft of developing data centers, which frankly touch all of your lives, all of our lives, every single day, including this meeting to enable it to happen. We're very credible, we have a significant amount of capital to put to work as well, and I'll touch on that a little bit later on, how that could benefit Caroline County if an opportunity like this was captured. And obviously, we're very community oriented. We understand that developments of this magnitude need to be very thoughtfully considered. It's why we have been operating in a very engaged manner with staff for over nine months. As Anne Neil observed, we have spent a significant amount of money being very responsive to that engagement, both at the consultant level as well as engaging with staff through this process. We also understand that on the way in that Caroline County was open for business, and I will address that towards the end of this as well, because I think it's important you understand the positive impact that developments of this nature can have for the county and the people in the county. The application overview, we have been engaged with Caroline County Economic Development leaders, staff for over nine months, as I referenced. We're trying to help bring critical infrastructure to Caroline County through a project of this magnitude that we expected was complementary to the quality, the rural quality of life, and I'll show you how that actually works relative to a development like this. From a uses perspective, we've profited more limited uses than the planned industrial park would allow. We are very specifically advancing utility facilities, public uses, businesses, professional buildings, data centers as a specific use with the intended focus of this development exclusively on data centers. We have proactively excluded other uses which could be contemplated, like quarries, heavy manufacturing, and urban sprawl. Obviously, this would be contingent on the comprehensive plan update, which you all proactively addressed before hearing this, which is obviously your want, but this is the parcel that is, that is the eight hundred and fifty-five acres that was referenced earlier, and that's the specific piece we're talking about here. I won't go through each of the parcel numbers, I think it's pretty similar to what everyone's been talking about this evening. Let me talk to you about why we picked this location. You'll see a large yellow line that goes right through the middle of this parcel of land, or these parcels of land. That is a five hundred KV high tension power line. It has a multi-hundred-foot easement that facilitates that power line to exist in the first place. And so to the extent that we talk about the impact that a development like this would have, there already is a five hundred KV power line that goes right through this property with a massive easement on either side of it that was put in place a very long time ago. It obviously crosses into Hanover County and goes through the battlefield, which you can see at the bottom piece of this picture here. Transmission lines are crucial to data centers. Data centers that don't have power are not particularly useful. So the location of this parcel is very deliberate. There are only so many parcels of this magnitude with this type of power that is already in place. It doesn't constitute the building of new transmission. It simply takes advantage of transmission that exists today, and therefore, from a utility perspective, power utility perspective, it's not incrementally disruptive. Secondly, this is a master planned development of significant magnitude. The benefits to the county of a master planned data center of this magnitude mean that you avoid all of the challenges that have been experienced to the north, where data centers pop up all over the place and end up proximate to neighborhoods and in unplanned areas. And so a development of this magnitude is very, very thoughtful in its ability to actually be well screened and to exist or coexist with existing uses in counties like Caroline. As an example, the total development area that we would use on this site is less than six percent. I'll say that again, less than six percent. And so it's very easy to look at this and think twenty-odd buildings of a certain size. We're talking about eight hundred and fifty-five acres, and we'll be using less than six percent of it. Moving on to the next page. Each one of these developments has comprehensive noise studies, lighting studies, setbacks, and one of the very attractive aspects of data center development is it comes with very little traffic, which if you end up having logistics centers in your county, you will end up with a massive traffic problem. Data centers do not bring that. Moving on to the next slide, lots of discussion around Viewshed. This is actually the Viewshed from the battlefield, and as you can see, contemplated all the buildings behind, you don't see any of them. And that's been independently tasked by a third-party evaluation firm. We can share that if ever we need to take that further, but these are not massive buildings like you see up and down I ninety-five with big trucks going in and out of them that you can see from just about anywhere. They are extremely well-hidden, and that is deliberate. We use native landscaping, our proffers include height setbacks, buffers, screening. We have obviously very limited traffic and significant noise mitigation, and we don't move equipment in and out of these facilities every single day like other distribution warehouses approved, either in the county or in neighboring counties. Let me talk about some of the benefits from an infrastructure perspective. We have been collaborating with county staff, been extremely helpful, to help us plan the delivery of fiber optic networks into this area and help improve the broadband access of all the constituents of Caroline County. At the same time, we have been very well advanced in improving the delivery of water to this site and obviously to those who it would pass by, and sewer infrastructure. And if I look to the right-hand side here and contemplate the Caroline County Comprehensive Plan through economic development, pursue well-financed business and industrial prospects, of which I would articulate a project of this magnitude would meet, and this backing would meet that standard. And secondly, recruit industrial investors for land development in order to address costly infrastructure investment normally obligated to the county. We are not coming to the county and asking for the county to spend county and taxpayer money to develop a project like this. We are putting our money up, including almost fifteen million dollars of our capital to advance water infrastructure, which is much needed in this county, as an example. Next slide. This is the conceptual site plan, I won't go into great. I won't go into great detail here with my precious three minutes left, other than to say that a project of this magnitude obviously evolves over time and needs to be thoughtfully considered. We, we do not materially impact wetlands. We are not impacting the river. We can't plan or design or build anything without meeting all of the stringent standards of a county and/or a state. And I would remind you that you're looking at 855 acres and we're using less than 6% of it. I go on to the proposed proffers. We have gone to great length to facilitate significant buffering, to avoid areas of significant slopes, of wetlands, of view shed, et cetera. And we can obviously go through those in detail if they are, if there's a curiosity. At the end of the day, we consider ourselves to be a very responsible developer. We own these assets forever, and we take the development of them, the responsible development of them extremely seriously. Let me touch on the community benefits, the economic aspect. Caroline County's Comprehensive Plan. An effective economic development program means, is the means to offset impacts of residential growth and improve the quality of life for all county citizens. Its primary goal is to encourage compatible, high-quality industries, offering semi-skilled, skilled, professional job opportunities. The county seeks industry that is capital-intensive and conscious of the standards of local infrastructure. So what does this development mean for this county? Significant property tax increase. The county will receive nearly $500 million of new property taxes over the first 15 years. And at the 10-year mark, over $50 million annually. I'll say that one more time. $500 million of new property taxes over 15 years and 50, five-zero, million annually by 2032, while using 6% of the land that we're buying. Would enable the county to fund infrastructure projects, new services, schools, and increased teacher pay, for example. Could reduce property taxes and shift the tax burden from residents to businesses. It also generates very good permanent paying jobs. Specifically to the development itself, 150 to 200 new high-paying, permanent data center jobs accessible by Caroline County residents. Examples: security, electricians, mechanical technicians, IT technicians. In addition, developments of this magnitude also pull through 800 new permanent jobs supporting industry beyond and 1,000 construction jobs, not least of all the benefits that accrue to neighboring businesses referenced below. And I recognize I'm out of time, and that's what I'd like to share. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We will now open the public hearing regarding RZ-06, 2022, Valco Caroline County LLC. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter?
Again, my name is Karen Collins, Reedy Church District. I'm just going to use his words verbatim, significant magnitude project, okay? This is a huge project. They've worked with the county for nine months. But according to Mr. Fincham, they did the bare minimum of notification for the complimentary comprehensive plan proposal that we just heard, which is about the same amount of time that the community has had to digest everything that we have been able to access for this proposal. And again, a significant magnitude project in size. It should have so much community involvement that has not happened. Studies are great, but were they project-specific? Where are those for the residents to review? Noise studies, socioeconomic studies, natural resource studies, need to be project-specific, not just general, "we've done this before" kind of studies. I don't, I have not been able to access any of that information. And the infrastructure that they are proposing to bring, it's self-serving for them. So I, I mean, the people that are already living there, we've already been promised fiber optic from the county through the pandemic money. I'm hoping that's still happening. And we don't need water and sewer. We are all on wells that work perfectly fine. We don't need sewer. So again, a lot of it's self-serving. And I'll just, one of the things that really stood out for me in the original proposal that was put out for public review was that in, in their proposal, they say that proposed rezoning, as described above, is consistent with the vision statement from the Caroline County Comprehensive Plan. That, to me, just shows how completely out of touch they are. Because when I read the vision statement for our current comprehensive plan, in no way is a massive data center complex in line with rural preservation, again, which is the key element to our current comprehensive plan and specifically the Carmel Church Plan, which is where this rezoning is to take place. You know, they go on to talk about all the benefits. But again, all you have to do is do the due diligence and look at what's happening in Northern Virginia. Google it, and you will see that most of the things that they're saying are benefits are not coming to fruition in these other areas. They're coming to the rural counties because the land is cheaper and they can get by with more. And, you know, all the jobs that they're creating, the construction jobs, there aren't, construction companies in Caroline County big enough to handle that. So that's coming from outside of Caroline. Who are they really benefiting, other than themselves and the property owners? So I just respectfully request you guys to completely deny this. But if it is entertained, to do a lot more research and please include the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins. Anyone else, anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Leonard. I'm actually a Hanover County representative and represent four generations on our family farm. My sisters and I own pieces that are probably the most impacted by your proposal, which was well-presented. But as Ms. Collins said, I think that they're perhaps self-serving. We own the parcels directly across from the supposed 6%, but those buildings and everything else, I think, will ruin our view shed, our enjoyment of the properties. My grandparents started building in, started acquiring the land, again, for the rural preservation aspect and the rural use many years ago. So you have a letter in your packets from us, two or three of them. But it asks you to carefully consider the rural aspects and maintain the pastoral lifestyle that the people on your side of the river and our side would like to maintain. Thanks for your work on a contentious subject.
Thank you, Mrs. Leonard. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. I'm Faith McFadden. I live in the Mattupanai District. I'm here to express my objection to this project. I think that a lot of folks are having trouble figuring out where it is. And it looks like such a huge area when you look on that map. But as best I understand it, it's going, if you're, if anyone in this room wants to try to check it out yourself, or a map, or applicant, or whoever, I think it's Verdun Road is technically Hanover and Jericho is technically Caroline. I'm not sure. But if you roughly take one of those from Route 1 and cut across the middle and Huellet, you'll see the river runs right across the middle. And is, from what I understand, the project's on the other side of that in Caroline. And then we have our Hanover neighbors on the opposite side of the river. Is my interpretation, if you want to check it out. I know that data centers are a thing. I can't talk to you about tax dollars and how to run a county and what it'll bring in, all those things. I'm a nurse, specifically an oncology nurse. I work in research. This is all way out of my scope. So I do know, from living here for the past six years and growing up here as a child and having a few generations of family here, I've only come back to Caroline and lived here for about six years. But I think it's safe to say we know growth is coming to the county. I thought that this stuff was actually approved when I looked at our, the maps, and I think it's Chapter 8 of the Land Use Plan, and was reading through how this happened, like how we got here and how all these things got before us. I don't know how people in counties know when these things come up to speak to them. I'm in Mattupanai, and it seems so far away, but I can get to 95 in like two minutes. So when I tried to find this, I went out on Jericho and tried to find Huellet Road. And I knew that Mount Airy was right there. I drove past it three times before I could even figure out where the turn was. I turned on my GPS to find it. This was before a sign was ever required to be posted there. Out of curiosity, I drove back there because there's that little piece in the middle. And I was like, what is, it kind of reminded me of like that little house in Lafayette that's stuck up there on the corner. If you've driven up there recently, I think it's still there. I try not to go that way. But I drove back there because I was real curious. How do you get back there and why would that little piece not be included in it? And all I could see was like everybody's talking about, all the, all the things they love about the county. I'm not sure who's behind this project. I tried to look up the business. You can look up the business license. It's like two lawyers in Colorado. It's, the address they gave you is a P.O. box. You can find an LLC everywhere from here to Australia. I would encourage you to deny this and make sure that our residents are hearing about this. I'm curious how my neighbors heard about this and how our Hanover residents heard about this because even with that little yellow sign, it's real hard to find. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mark Actenson, Charlesburg. So it sounds like they're going to use only 40 acres. But 40 acres in that location is a big difference if you're talking about a commercial development. And then they want to rezone 800 acres. Now, I don't understand, even if their intentions are really great for the use of that property, once 800 acres gets rezoned and is no longer rural preservation, I don't understand how it doesn't eventually get developed. And my wife and I moved here from Chicago to Caroline County because of its commitment to rural preservation. The county should think long and hard about reneging on that promise.
Thank you, Mr. Actenson. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening again. Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. I'm probably the only person in this room that actually subscribes to the Freelance Star and gets a print copy. But there was an article in the Freelance Star on February 3rd of this year about Stafford County seeking more information on data centers. And the supervisors agreed that there was much to consider, especially relating to the huge quantities of water needed for cooling, the power supply, and the huge noise that they emanate. And the fact that ironically, they will rely on generators to keep their power supply stable in times of grid outages. What was also revealed in the article by James Barron that four years ago Caroline and the surrounding counties revamped their tax codes for computers and related equipment, obviously in anticipation of data centers. So are they, they are seeing these vast complexes as money-making cash cows, almost similar to the mindset of the solar people with their huge tax incentives lining their pockets and all of the expense, at the expense of us little guys, fast-tracking our huge, our comprehensive plan and allowing our rural lands, once again, to be taken over and taken advantage of. In fact, also in February of this year, over 130 speakers rallied at the Warrington Town Council till almost 3:00 a.m., including 92-year-old, 92-year-old actor Robert Duval, who owns a horse farm there, opposing a proposed Amazon data center. Despite the overwhelming opposition, curiously, and one would wonder corruptly, it was approved. Duval described Warrington as "the last station stop on the way to heaven." And I think every person in this room considers Caroline our beautiful county to be on that same train. I'm curious where this LLC is going to get the water from to cool, to cool the plants and to provide the water that they're saying they're going to run to the county. Also, are they going to be putting a sewer system that they're going to be running also? They're also planning for solar power. I don't know where that's coming from. I thought we, we took away the ordinance for that. And I'm more, I'm more concerned about what is the impact along the long frontage of the North Anna River and the people who love it and call it home. So I ask you to please recommend denial of the Mount Airy data center proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Rita Bell, Hyphen Mont, AKA Belmonte.
I was wondering if you were going to come up.
I just want to say that I really appreciate everybody for all that we together collectively are doing to bring growth to our county. But I stand here today in support of all of my neighbors in this county who want and deserve to preserve rural preservation. Please vote no on this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kermit Davis, Reedy Church District. I am opposed to it. My property is butts up to this property. It's adjacent to it. I don't want the center. But what I don't want more than the center is the 10 years of construction. So it says it's going to be a 10-year build-out was the, what I got to begin with. And I don't know if it's changed. But nobody's even addressed that. I mean, the noise of 10 years worth of construction and dust and, and clankety-clank and diesel fuels. And, I mean, no one's even addressed that. And there's nowhere getting it. I know of no construction that's quiet. So I would vote, say vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Good evening. Kevin Collins, Reedy Church District. To touch on the benefits that this property offers the company that wants to purchase it regarding the high-power lines that run through it, they should maybe look into the fact that Northern Virginia is currently struggling to provide power to these data centers. And there has actually been a special exemption for them to be allowed to run their diesel generators for extended periods of time to make up for the lack of power in the grid. Now, I don't know about you guys, but Northern Virginia's power grid is a little more in-depth than Caroline County's. So yes, the power is there, but where are they going to get the extra kilowatts for this? Exactly where it comes from in Northern Virginia, and that's running full-size diesel generators, all hours of the day, all hours of the night, who knows? As far as notifications of meetings, you guys might want to get with the commissioner of the revenues office because they can get ahold of people. They don't, they find everybody. I never fail to get a tax bill, so maybe we need to move to something along those lines where we send out important notices like this. Because this is not a small, you know, I want to rezone an acre to put a house closer to my, you know, barn. This is 855 acres. They only need 50. The Virginia Bazaar is for sale. It's already a commercial property. They should probably go take a look at that as well. Maybe that would fit their needs better. Maybe that would fit their needs better than making eight hundred and fifty-five acres a planned industrial park. Furthermore, the national parks were very interested in hearing about this. I don't know if you guys got comments from them or not, but they were completely unaware of this project. And I know most of you realize that right across the river lies the North Anna Battlefield, which is a National Park Service. And they are very, very concerned that this is even being considered to be a change without their notification or their input in it. So I would imagine if you haven't already received their two-page letter, you will probably be receiving copies of it. So when they say that they've been working so diligently with the county for nine months, none of us knew about it. So apparently, the National Park Service didn't know about it. I happened to find out about this meeting back in January from a random little sign on the side of the road that somebody luckily made and put up and then followed up on a Facebook post. So again, getting back to the notifying people of decisions like this, they need to do better. I vehemently oppose any rezoning of land. I hope you guys feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Thank you. My name is again Bill East Smith. I live at one nine zero three six Hewlett Road in Hanover County. I waited till all of the Caroline County citizens had the opportunity to speak first. So please let me know when my time is coming to a close so I can rapidly wrap up. I'd like to say first of all, thank you for the way you handled the previous voting that you did with the comp plan. I commend you for that. That was an honorable, wonderful thing to do prior to this part of the meeting. And if you revisit that, I hope that you will contact me or exactly my husband. I am representing him and speaking for him. He's sitting at the back. It's Walton Wickham Smith, Jr., and he owns sixteen of the properties across the river where it used to be a dairy farm. And now he's a grain farmer. So I want to make that clear to you so that you know I'm not just speaking because I've lived there, but I'm speaking on his behalf. Again, thank you again. And if you do change that comp plan again or try to do an amendment, we would like to be aware of that. The items that I prepared for tonight was in this point of view that from what we understood, it was going to be a data center. And that more than likely it was going to be voted upon because from what I've read, I believe it's forty-two million the governor has appropriated for that. I think it's wonderful that the governor wants to do things like that. But again, is this the right property for this to be on is the question. And I support my governor in doing that. But again, is that, is a quarter somewhere between around one and ninety-five a better location? The, and in keeping in time with that, since we're on the, what was referred to as the backside in some of their documentation, that is our front side. So if this does ever get approved, we want it to be just as much vegetation, growth, planning of whatever they're putting around the buildings. We want it on the backside as well because that backside is our front side. And also, we don't want to see the structure. So we don't know how tall the structure will be. We haven't heard that. Tonight I have learned, I thought it was just going to be a data center. So my approach to it was all from that perspective. Tonight we've learned it could be buildings used for other things, homes. I, I'm not going to say necessarily, and this is coming from my husband, what he's necessarily for or against, but I, because that's coming from him. But I do want to make a couple of things clear.
Time's up.
May I wrap up? We shoot cannons in, on the farm. If that's going to affect the data center, that's pretty bad. We are concerned about the animal and the wildlife, and we're concerned, and we also shoot guns. So if that's going to cause vibration, that's bad. Across the river tonight, it was low.
Ma'am.
There may not be enough water to cool things.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter? Final call. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is now closed. Mrs. Cosby, would you or the applicant care to respond or make an additional statement? You have ten minutes in which to do so if you'd like to use it.
No, I appreciate, again, we, we, on behalf of the applicant, appreciate the planning commission's time and the people coming out. And, you know, we followed the process, you know, we've again been working with the county officials and so, you know, were optimistic that the, you know, the location and the comprehensive plan amendment, you know, was appropriate in this area, and we still think it is. But obviously, the commission had a different idea there, but we appreciate the process. We followed the, you know, the notice provisions and, and so we don't have anything additional to add.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions? Let me ask, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You can go ahead. I don't have any questions. I have some comments based on, but based on the public hearing.
Ms. Cosby, has your client been involved in any other similar enterprises in the Commonwealth?
You know, I will defer to, do you want to come and speak to that?
As I said earlier, we've developed data centers all over the world and certainly all over the United States. And we have also developed data centers in Virginia, in, up in Ashburn, with the previous business that we developed up there. So yes, we have been active in Virginia.
All right, sir. And specifically, I was inquiring about Loudoun County. And the reason I was inquiring about Loudoun County is that they are inundated with two hundred and sixteen data centers. Last year, their Board of Supervisors elected to stop any future data centers because of the strains it was putting on their infrastructure. Data centers then began to move into Prince George County. They found the similar situation. And now they're trying to move into Spotsylvania. And I understand that it's the nature of the beast, so to speak, to need the infrastructure. And I commend the model that you're presenting and the idea that you're presenting. I am not going to support it, and I think it's only fair that I explain to you why. And I'm not trying to tear your proposal apart at any means, and I'll just list a few things. I will say on the pro side, that data centers are a great revenue-generating means for the local governments. They really are. But with every pro, there comes a con or cons. I think the biggest con that you are facing with this project is location, location, location. We are, this property is in rural preservation, as you know. The commissioners that went before us and the Board of Supervisors that went before us and set up the rural preservation areas did so with a purpose in mind. What you are proposing is totally out of character for the area in which you want to go. I could only suggest that you try to find a different location in Caroline County where we can put in a data center, but maybe not to the magnitude that you desire. Here again, I appreciate all of the work that you, the attorneys, the county has done. It has to have been exhaustive. But those are just some of the reasons that I am not going to support it at this time. I defer to any of my fellow commissioners if they have any questions.
I don't have any, I don't have any questions. I just have a couple of quick comments because this is something I get from my citizens in my districts all the time. And it came up again during this particular public hearing. And that is, yes, in a rural preservation area, we can't stop a certain amount of housing. Right now, your area is zoned for ten-acre lots with, some of those lots can be cut off for more than one house, but that, and that's what, and, and Spotsylvania often gets brought up in our public hearings, and that's what happened to Spotsylvania. They were rural preservation forty years ago, but houses came in and came in, and people from outside the area came in. And once you get a lot of houses, you're kind of forced in to putting in certain businesses because you need the businesses to pay the money for those schools and for the fire and rescue and police. So in part of our planning, this is something you want to go home and think about. You don't want the, too many houses to come in first because then you're forced in to building businesses that, you know, you may not want to do. That's what happened in Spotsylvania. They had a lot of homes, and then they had to build the businesses. Louisa took a different approach. They found one large business, which you may be aware of, and that's the nuclear power plant about forty years ago. They built that one large business, which I'm not sure would be approved today, but they built that one large business in Louisa. And that one large business made enough money for them that they could pay to build schools and to keep their area rural. That's why Louisa is more rural because they do have an interstate too, Interstate sixty-four. And why Spotsylvania, because of all the housing that came in, Spotsylvania ended up having to build businesses. So I'm not saying this particular business is something appropriate for this particular area, but I am saying that we can't stop housing, but we don't want the houses to come in first and then we get stuck into approving certain businesses. If we find good businesses that we can work with and that will give us good tax money for our schools, we want to seriously consider those. And, and then we do have the money, and then the businesses come in before too much housing gets into control, out of control. And that's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Weber.
I think I'd like to make a motion at this particular stage.
Yes, I would.
If I may. Where is rezoning R Z oh six twenty twenty-two? Case appears named Mount Airy One LLC is generally inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use map. And where is the public necessity, convenience, and general welfare and good standing practices warrants the denial of this request? I recommend R Z oh six twenty twenty-two be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of denial.
I second.
Motion has been made for denial by Mr. Weber, seconded by Mr. Young. Any discussion? All those in favor of denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. The motion for denial recommendation to the Board of Supervisors passes. Our next item. Text Amendment oh three twenty twenty-three. Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an ordinance amendment to the zoning ordinance of Caroline County, Article fifteen, supplemental regulations, section eight, developmental standards. To add paragraph oh, the purpose of this amendment is to establish development standards for a special events facility. The standards that were spoken about at the last meeting are as follows. The minimum lot size shall be ten acres. Parking shall be located in designated areas screened from view of public roads, abutting properties and clearly identified on the site plan. Parking and/or loading or public, on public right-of-way or private ingress egress easement serving adjacent properties shall not be permitted. The permitted capacity shall be determined with the special exception for the special events facility, but it is in no case, sorry, but in no case shall exceed three hundred people excluding caterers. Events shall be invitation-only and not open to the public except that the Board of Supervisors may permit up to four public events open to the public per calendar year provided such events are specifically requested and identified by the applicant and approved by the board with the issuance of a special exception permit. All applicable licenses and permits shall be obtained prior to any event. Hours of operation shall be as required by the Board of Supervisors. The facility shall meet the applicable commercial entrance requirements of the Virginia Department of Transportation unless a greater standard is required by the board. All outdoor noise sources shall be located and directed internally so as to minimize impacts to neighboring properties. Noise limits shall not exceed the district standards established in chapter sixty-eight of the Caroline County Code. Multiple-day events shall be calculated as one event per day. When adjoining a residential property, any outside lighting utilized will be source-shielded and downward-facing, but candles shall not exceed point five feet at the property line. The facility owner shall be responsible for ensuring compliance with these standards and any other conditions imposed by the Board of Supervisors in granting a special exception permit.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Commissioners have any questions?
I can't find my paper with which.
Text Amendment zero three twenty twenty-three. Special events facility standards.
Mr. Chair, I think this is pretty standard with what we've been doing for special events. Want to, Carol?
No, but I'm, I'm familiar with.
Well.
Well, I think we have to have a public hearing on them. The public hearing for text amendment zero three twenty twenty-three is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this amendment? Or not amendment, the standards? Anyone wishing to speak regarding the standards? Anyone wishing to speak regarding the standards? Seeing no one come forward, the public hearing is closed. May we have a motion, please?
Make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Public, yes, sir, to be, 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 T X T oh three twenty twenty-three. Recommend the, forward to the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Motion made by, I have lost my place. Motion made by Mr. Minor, seconded by Mr. Weaver to recommend approval. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Text Amendment oh four twenty twenty-three. Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. T X T zero four twenty twenty-three. Staff is bringing forward a public hearing, two public hearing, a proposed text amendment to Article fifteen, section twenty-four of the zoning ordinance to repeal and replace section one Chesapeake Bay preservation area to amend language related to the Chesapeake Bay program review. Pursuant to the adoption of Chesapeake Bay amendments by the Board, at Board of Supervisors, a final Pursuant to the adoption of Chesapeake Bay amendments by the board at su- board of supervisors, a final review by DEQ identified several issues that they advised neither needed further clarification. In the draft copy of the amendments, uh, we have corrected all the changes that DEQ has requested and, uh, in Chesapeake Bay. And, uh, we're bringing to you for approval to get it adopted and satisfy the requirements.
Thank you, sir. But these items in red were by the planning department and the items in blue are recommended verbiage from, uh, DEQ is, is I understand?
That's correct.
All right. Uh, nothing in it detrimental, uh, in the blue, there, there's nothing detrimental to the county or that will put the county at risk in any way or any shape or form. It's not going to cause a headache down the road.
No, sir.
Thank you. Public hearing regarding text amendment oh four twenty twenty-three is now over. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Final notice, anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, what be your pleasure?
Mr. Pennington, do we have, um, to do this, do we have some kind of written approval from DEQ?
Uh, we have documentation as to the changes that they requested. And we have sent them our changes to make sure that they are okay with them, and they have said that should we adopt this, this would be acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion.
Please, sir.
As soon as I can find my, this is a paper here. Oh, here it is. Okay. I'd like to make a motion. Where is the public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices warrants the approval of text oh four twenty twenty-three? I recommend this motion to be forwarded to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weaver to move this forward with recommendation of approval, seconded by Mr. Young. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. We now have text amendment oh five twenty twenty-three and text amendment oh six twenty twenty-three. Both of these will be presented simultaneously and it will require a second vote for each.
Also, just as clarification, holding both public hearings together, any public comment will be six minutes instead of three minutes.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. TXT oh five twenty twenty-three and TXT zero six twenty twenty-three. Planning staff is currently working on creating a zoning district and standards for sand and gravel extraction operations. During this time, staff feels it necessary to repeal the uses for sand and gravel minerals and mineral extraction operations. TXT zero five twenty twenty-three will repeal sand and gravel extraction and sales from the special exception section of the RP Rural Preservation Zoning Districts. TXT zero six twenty twenty-three will repeal sand and gravel operations and crush stone operations from the special exception section of the M-one Industrial Zoning Districts. The text amendments are as follows. TXT oh five twenty-three, ordinance to amend zoning ordinance Caroline County repealing article four rural preservation, section five special exception uses with board of supervisors approval, paragraph three sand and gravel extraction and sales. TXT zero six reads, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance Caroline County, Virginia repealing article ten, M-one Industrial, section three, uses permitted by special exception, paragraph three, crush stone operations, and paragraph five, sand and gravel operations.
Commissioners, any questions to staff?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment and I've said this before, I think we have about nine of these sand and gravel operations in the county because most of them are in my district and they damaged, they not only damaged the land, but we don't get much tax money out of it. We get some, but not much, and it doesn't create a whole lot of local jobs. Some truck driving jobs because the sand and gravel has to be hauled out, but, so, um, I would be in favor of this to, to, it just needs to be looked at and redone. I don't even think we need any more sand and gravel mines in the county.
All right, we'll open a public hearing regarding text amendment zero five twenty twenty-three. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter?
Good afternoon, all.
Good evening.
Sorry, sorry, for clarification, uh, make sure we're opening both public hearings, oh five and oh six.
All right, we opened them simultaneously?
Yes, same time.
Text amendment oh five twenty twenty-three and text amendment oh six twenty twenty-three are both being addressed at this time. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, my name's Kevin Marshall. I'm actually from Spotsylvania County, Berkwood District. Uh, I sit on the board of supervisors there, so I appreciate all y'all's service to start off with. Uh, I spent five years sitting on the other side of the, um, diocese there and, um, it's, uh, it takes, it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort out of you all, so appreciate what you're doing here for Caroline. I'm here in Caroline County, myself and my family, uh, represented by twelve hundred acres in the Port Royal District. Um, we've owned that property our whole lives. Uh, my grandfather, uh, well, some of it was inherited, so I was going to tell you, eighty years, we've owned some of the property for a hundred and twenty years. Uh, we've got large sand and gravel deposits on our land. It's in a rural preservation district. Right now, we have no intentions of changing what we're doing. We're currently growing pine trees, beans, so, uh, and, uh, corn. I don't want to change what we're doing. We enjoy our land, we hunt, we fish it. Um, when you take, you already have in place within this ordinance that's there. If you're going to re, if I go to put in for a sand and gravel mine on a piece of property, the board of supervisors, I put a special exemption permit in, the board can deny me. Um, currently, if you repeal that, I don't even have the right to do that. You take that property right away from me. Um, currently have no intentions of doing it. Your ordinance as it stands, you, uh, your staff, uh, Mr. Fisher was nice enough to take my phone call. Understand that they're currently working on drafting a new ordinance for sand and gravel mining. Uh, I would ask that uh, the planning commission would defer this until that new ordinance can be presented to the property owners. Currently, I haven't, as a property owner, I have no idea what your new ordinance is. Um, currently, your board of supervisors can deny me if I want to put a sand and gravel pit in. Um, right now, I see, if you repeal it now, I, I have, I don't even have the option of presenting, uh, a project to you. I just ask for a deferral until we can see what this new ordinance looks like. Um, and that, I would, I would hope, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, we wouldn't do a zoning ordinance amendment this way, um, in, in my county. But we wouldn't repeal it and then wait six months for a new one to show up. We, we would have them both, we would repeal and, and replace uh, in the same, at the same time period. And I ask you all to, uh, consider doing the same here in Caroline County. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Take your time.
Donna Marshall Smith, sixty-six oh seven Marie Road, Woodford, Virginia, which is actually in Spotsylvania County. But we have property in Caroline County. That was my nephew. And I actually can go, and I've done this about three different times, and I got very, very upset about this. Yesterday, I had a good report from my heart. Today, not so good because y'all upset me, but that's all right. I found out about this tonight at six fifteen. Not in anything. I don't take the Freelance Star. I don't do online, so y'all have to notify people some other sort of way. But I am in opposition to what you proposed here. It's not complete, it's not doable the way that it's been done. I think it needs to be denied. Go back and revamp whatever you want to do. The one thing I will make comment with the whole process tonight and discussing your land, your property, because we tree farm, we do corn, we do beans, we have ponds on it. I've sat many a time in a lawn chair with my son, who is now, he's forty-one years old, and let him fish on our property in Caroline County. I've read a book and just sat there and let him do his thing. Now I'm doing it for my granddaughter. So, I kind of sort of don't like the, the comparing Spotsylvania and Caroline because at one point in time, our preacher was in Caroline County and the congregation was in Spotsylvania. Now we have the whole thing in Spotsylvania, but his parsonage is in Caroline County. So we're like neighbors. That's the way I consider us. So I want you all to please consider to deny this. I wrote this down again, but I didn't even go by. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is M.R. Foles and, uh, uh, we have, uh, property in Caroline and Spotsylvania as well.
What is your voting district, sir?
Pardon?
What is your voting district?
He's in Spotsylvania.
It's Spotsylvania.
You're in Spotsylvania, okay.
We're right in the corner of Spotsylvania where property is contiguous from Spotsylvania into Caroline County.
Okay.
And up on seventeen corridor. And, uh, uh, our founding fathers, uh, uh, said that, uh, that property rights are the basis of our constitutional, uh, rights and which made America the greatest nation on the face of the earth. And to continue to suppress, uh, property rights and the persons using of their property to, to the benefit of everyone. Everyone uses sand and gravel, every house, every school, every building. And it's the major thing in, uh, in asphalt roads. Everybody loves to drive on a nice road. And so to, uh, and you can only get it where it's needed, where the Lord put it. And so to say that you, that you can't, uh, uh, provide sand and gravel, uh, for the use of our, of our, uh, people and our community is denying our constitutional property rights, which Virginia was very strong in, uh, in saying that. So I would, uh, I would say, uh, to, that, uh, I would recommend that we consider not take away property rights for, uh, for where the Lord puts sand and gravel, so it can be provided for our people in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Uh, my name is Judith Foles. I live at sixteen oh one Belvedere Drive, Belvedere Plantation in Spotsylvania County, adjacent to Caroline County, and we own property adjacent to your county. Twenty years ago, we applied for a sand and gravel special use permit. At that time, there were only about two others, even mining sand and gravel, and those were mostly closed, closed down and reclaimed. And we have been going through this process and two years ago, we were denied again on this basis of your comprehensive plan without considering, as my husband said, you can only find sand and gravel. And we are in Port Royal, our property's in Port Royal District. There are no other businesses, there's no schools in that district that students have to take a long ride away. That's your consideration, and I appreciate hearing to other citizens, their concern about the rural preservation. But we have lived here in fifty-one years, we have seen the growth in the area and, uh, and have been farming agricultural land for all that time. But progress does come, uh, to the area, and you've all mentioned you don't want Caroline County to become Spotsylvania County, and that's your prerogative. But you use the sand and gravel that we mine just adjacent to your property for the roads that you travel on, for the buildings, and you say, we don't need anymore because we don't want more houses in Caroline County. Well, that's fine if that's what you want. But it, progress will come and people are moving to the area. And we do need to be considerate of, our family recently uh, owned property adjacent to Belvedere in Spotsylvania and cooperated with, uh, the builder and donated over a hundred acres of land, put it in, um, conservation easement. So we have preserved some of our agricultural land, but the portion, portion that has sand and gravel is, um, provided in cover for our whole family and needed materials for our county. And so we would, uh, ask that you consider, because four other, um, sand and gravel operations were approved by the county. And yet ours was the last one to ask and was entirely surrounded by conservation easement land. And with the agreement, it would return to agricultural land. So there are ways in which you can accommodate, I think you need to consider. And just one other moment regarding communication. When they first tried to change this, remove this, uh, sand and gravel from this code, special use permit, uh, we were notified by a letter, but there was only twenty property owners from our property on down Route Two that were notified because they said they didn't have to tell anybody else in the county. They were going to change the zoning. What they were trying to do was put a scenic pre- preservation on our property, um, which would have superseded your rural preservation. But land can be, our property that we have had mined is being reclaimed and, and portions of it are being to, used again for agriculture. Um, and we feel that it can be done properly. Um, our family reclaimed all of the property where now the new post development is uh, and ag- and farmed it for a number of years. So it can be done. We know how to do it. We feel this way, you are, uh, denying other people with God-given, uh, materials that everybody needs and uses. We thank you for your time and consideration, but think that you definitely do need a better way of modifying people. I only knew about this meeting and we owned property that it would be affected by this law by reading the Freelance Star. And I don't think that's fair to all the citizens in your county to not have proper, uh, notification and time for discussion before these kind of issues come up and are voted on by just a few people of the county. And, uh, then the rest do not have representation, uh, because of lack of knowledge. So I appreciate your work and your time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Foles. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding these matters? Anyone else wishing to speak regarding these matters? Final call, anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Pennington. The, these two items are going to have an impact on people's ability to fully utilize their land or, uh, I mean, you've heard the concerns.
If the ordinance is repealed, then no one would be able to apply for sand and gravel extraction until such time as the board of supervisors approved a new sand and gravel extraction ordinance.
Okay, and, and just my personal feeling, I don't know how my fellow commissioners feel, but, uh, it's kind of putting the cart before the horse.
Well, I mean, we just told somebody they couldn't use their land for data center.
Yes, ma'am, that's, yes, and that's an entirely different matter.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's basically telling people what they can use their land for.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and it, and I don't think, I do agree with the people, you know, that spoke, the two families that spoke here from Spotsylvania in that, um, we need sand and gravel, but, um, I just, I get from all the time from my citizens, we already have a lot in that area along the river, and that's a resource sensitive area. It's not only our, our. It's not only our rural preservation area, it's a resource sensitive area. And I think we need to uh, redo the amendment in regard to, you know, how many more sand and gravel operations can we put down there? There, you know, there along the, the Tidewater Trail. River cor, it's in the Rapidic River Valley. And where, I don't know if you've been to the public hearings whenever, there's usually about a hundred people here that speak against it.
Yeah.
And I hate to tell people, you know, what they can and cannot do with their land, but that's basically what we do every time we're here.
Yeah. And, and in the previous situation with the Carmel Church, the applicant did not have a right to use the land in that manner prior to our dealing with it. We're dealing with a situation now where people already have the right.
They don't have a right. They have, it has to be a special exemption.
Right. They have the ability to, to use it.
Yeah, and that's what he had. He had the special ability to apply, you know, for an exception. And that, and that's all of these mines are a special exception. They're not by rights.
And as I read this, it says, planning staff is currently working on a zoning district at standards for sand and gravel excavation and operation. Why are we trying to repeal this at this particular time until that data is brought to us? I'm sorry, you know, this is what.
Well, I think the same reason we repealed the solar, we repealed it and we didn't have a new one. So they're asking us on the sand and gravel, it's the same thing, repeal it before we have a new one.
Well, see, and I think that's the wrong way to do it.
Well, why did we repeal the solar one before we had a new one? I mean, it's, it's the same thing.
I don't think so, honey. That's my opinion.
We repealed it and we didn't have a new ordinance in place. So.
Well, I, in that particular case, then I would ask that this be deferred for clarification. Can I do that, Mr. Chair?
I, I would feel better about that than just denying with that.
Then I would ask that TXT oh five, twenty twenty-three, I do each one, right?
You have to make two motions.
Okay. I would ask that this be deferred at this particular time for clarification.
Mr. Weaver, uh, timeframe, thirty days?
Yeah, thirty days would be fine.
Until our next regular meeting? There he goes. It's a motion to defer TXT oh five, twenty twenty-three by Mr. Weaver. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Williams. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed nay? The ayes have it, deferred to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Then I would also ask, Mr. Chair, that TXT oh six, twenty twenty-three also be deferred to our next regular meeting.
Second it as well.
Alright. Motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. Minor. TXT oh six, twenty twenty-three to be deferred to our next regular meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed nay? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, folks. Sorry, Phil.
Alright, uh, text amendment oh seven, twenty twenty-three, text amendment oh eight, twenty twenty-three, text amendment oh nine, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Pennington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, in this situation, we will have all three text amendment public hearings at one time. Members from the public will get nine minutes to speak if should they have a comment. And we will need three motions, one on each case at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff is bringing forward to the planning commission's consideration and public hearing a text amendment, three text amendments related to electrical, electric vehicle charging centers. As the number of electric vehicles increase, the need for electric vehicle charging stations has also increased. Currently, there are electric vehicle charging centers along the Interstate ninety-five corridor and more being proposed along the corridor. Charging stations have three levels, one slow, two medium, and three rapid charging. The level one is considered slow voltage, including the range from zero through one hundred and twenty volts. Level two is considered medium with a hundred and twenty to a hundred and four, two hundred and forty volts. Level, levels one and two are most commonly used for home charging, while level three is considered faster rapid charging with voltage greater than two hundred and forty and is used in most commercial charging stations. Electric vehicle charging stations are currently allowed as an accessory use to an existing primary use. A charging center is not allowed in the current, current ordinance. The proposed text amendments would add a definition to, to development standards for an EV charging center, which is multiple charging stations and EV charging centers on a parcel as the primary use in the M-one industrial and B-one commercial zoning districts. The text amendments read as follows. TXT zero seven, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Caroline County by amending Article Two definitions to add the definition for electric vehicle charging center. Definition is a parcel of land or area on a parcel where the primary use is charging electric vehicles not associated with a retail establishment. We have provided standards to go along with that definition. Parcels shall not be located directly on a road in the highway corridor overlay district and must be on one or, one, must be one or more parcels disconnected from the H-COP. Charging stations shall be set on a pedestal, charging state, charging stations shall not be placed in parking places located directly in front of ingress egress to a retail use. Parking areas shall be landscaped. Parking areas shall be well lit and provide a photometric plan to ensure less than point five foot candles at the property lines. Signage shall be posted for emergency contact information. And any generators, transformers, or other type of electrical equipment shall be screened on three sides. TXT zero eight, twenty twenty-three, is amending Article Nine, B-one Business, Section Two, uses by right to add paragraph thirty-four, electric vehicle charging center is a permitted use in the B-one zoning district. TXT zero nine, twenty twenty-three, is an ordinance amendment to Article Ten, M-one Industrial, Section Two, uses permitted by right to add paragraph thirty-three, electric vehicle charging center is a permitted use in the M-one zoning district. This use would be consistent with the comprehensive plan in the B-one and N-one zoning districts.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Commissioners, any questions on Mr. Pennington?
So what general area are these will be in, along the ninety-five corridor, basically, or?
So the way it's written right now, it could go on any B-one or M-one parcel. But most likely, uh, companies are putting them along the ninety-five corridor or major highways where people are making long trips where they're gonna need to uh.
They could be at any businesses, like a gas station?
That would already be permitted as an accessory use.
Okay.
If a ga, existing gas station or food line wanted to put in uh, an electric vehicle charger, we, that would be allowed as an accessory. What this would allow is a parking lot of chargers, thirty, forty chargers there. That's the only thing that's happening on this parcel is charging vehicles.
Okay.
So Craig, this would be a standalone, correct?
A standalone use of vehicle charging. That is correct.
Alright. No further questions? Commissioners, what be your pleasure on TXT oh seven, twenty twenty-three?
Uh, one more question. So um, would they be, they could, you could build one that's not ready, already there, correct? Or they have to use existing?
No, they could, they could purchase uh, raw land and develop it into a parking lot with charging stations. If this was approved.
And it would be, alright, in uh, business and?
Industrial.
Industrial. Okay.
Regarding text amendment oh seven, twenty twenty-three, is there a motion?
I, I don't think you closed the public hearing yet. I've asked for anybody to come up. You opened it.
It's getting late and I'm old.
Right, let's, let's open it again just in case.
Regarding text amendment oh seven, twenty twenty-three, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none come forward, public hearing is now closed.
Alright, now you gotta open eight and nine.
Regarding text amendment oh seven, correction, oh eight, twenty twenty-three, public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is now closed. Text amendment oh nine, twenty twenty-three, public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, what be your pleasure? Text amendment oh seven, twenty twenty-three?
Chair, I would like to make a motion. TXT oh seven, twenty twenty-three. There is the public necessity convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TXT oh seven, twenty twenty-three. I recommend that. TXT oh seven, twenty twenty-three. Be forwarded to the board supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Mr. Weaver made a motion for approval. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Minor. All those, any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed nay?
Abstain.
Mr. Young abstained? The vote was five ayes, one abstention. Motion carries. Alright, text amendment oh eight, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion regarding this matter? Don't everybody speak at once. We wanna get home before midnight.
I recommend that TXT oh eight, twenty twenty-three be forwarded to the board supervisor with a recommendation of approval.
Motion by Mr. Minor, seconded by Mr. Weaver. Text amendment oh eight, twenty twenty-three be forwarded to the board supervisors with a recommendation of approval. There being no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, one abstention. Mr. Young abstains, five ayes, motion carries. Text amendment zero nine, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I recommend that TXT oh nine, twenty twenty-three. Recommend that uh, be forwarded to the board supervisor.
Motion by Mr. Minor, seconded by Mr. Weaver for approval. Forwarding to this to the board of supervisors with the recommendation. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed nay?
Abstain again.
Abstained by Mr. Young, five ayes, one abstention. Motion carries. Alright, we're getting there. Any and all matters, text amendment ten, twenty twenty-three, Planned Innovation Research and Technology Development Park.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have before you uh, the first draft of a new section in the zoning ordinance uh, to support the data centers and other technology uses. Earlier tonight, you had an application for um, a data center park under the planned industrial park designation. While an application can be made under that provision of the ordinance, there are multiple uses in there and I think it was, there was some discussion of that that, that aren't appropriate for technology types of development. And the county is focusing on technology types of uses in the economic development recruitment efforts of the county. The proposed text amendment for a planned innovation, research, and technology district would focus primarily on those technology uh, uses and create a zoning district and allow development of those uses without potential impacts from other, um, I'll use the word undesirable uses that you would not want within those areas. And this zoning text amendment would actually support the comprehensive plan, um, Chapter Eight Amendment where we, we talk about the creation of these technology districts. And it would support the uh, comprehensive plan amendment where we designated that area near MCD as, as a technology, um, a planned innovation, research, technology uh, district. And there are other areas that, that the county is looking at as well. So what we're asking is, um, and, and these regulations, we, we, we look at setbacks, we look at buffers, we look at fencing, we look at architectural design. Because we, as, as we entertain these, these applications, we wanna make sure they're quality applications to the benefit of the county and, and don't adversely affect neighboring properties. And this district with specific language versus an M-one zoning or a, a planned industrial park zoning, we think the language in here better protects the county um, and, and focuses on um, the, the use in the development of property in, in a manner that is beneficial to the county. So what we're asking uh, is that you authorize this for public hearing at your next meeting so that we can begin that, that process of, of, of uh, looking at these regulations and, and ultimately forwarding a recommendation to the board of supervisors.
These districts, would these districts be exclusive use for research, technology, and data centers? Or i- is it a mixed use type thing or?
No, it's not really a mixed use because we're, we're not recommending that there be a residential or, or, you know, significant commercial component. So it would focus on those technology uses. For, for example, in a, in a M-one zoning or a planned industrial park zoning, while we have data centers and other technology uses, you have other uses such as warehouse and distribution or truck terminals or, or things like that, uses like that, that, that are potentially also allowed, okay? And there is a place for those, but in the areas where we're focusing the, these technology types of uses, we wanna make sure that um, that remains to focus, those types of uses remain to focus and not the other types of uses like warehouse, distribution, that, that have heavy truck traffic to go with them. There's a place for those uses, but they are not anticipated to be in, in this district.
And I guess that's what, what I was getting at. We're, to put it bluntly, we're trying to funnel where they go.
Yes, sir.
And uh, that's understandable. So I, I don't know how large these districts are that we're looking at. Cause I'll, we'll have to jump into that.
This simply establishes the regulation. So it's, it's, it's really the regulatory framework for someone to make an application for a technology type of use, okay? The, the, the size itself is, is. The, the, the size itself is, is probably going to be more dependent upon the applicant and the assemblage of land that, that they are able to, to acquire and put together. Um, so we're not trying to dictate a maximum, you know, size, uh, for a project. That's really gonna be in part dependent, one, on the comprehensive plan and what that says. Uh, and two, um, like any other developer, the, the, the land assemblage that they can put together and, and, and to mesh those, those, those two. Together with utilities and everything else.
I just don't wanna see us get embroiled into, uh, another solo facility fiasco like we've had before, uh, with, with data centers, uh, so.
Well, certainly u- utility availability is an issue. Okay, I think that was, well, at least one side of that was discussed tonight. But, but yes, utility availability for these types of uses is a facility, i- is an issue. But I would also say the discussions with the utility companies are ongoing as to timing for, for service delivery and, and things like that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
All right, um, I noticed there's a lot of, uh, standards here for my particular area of expertise, which is architecture, needless to say. Um, when an applicant comes forward with this type of application, are you gonna ask them to provide us with some kind of architectural drawing of what this building's gonna look like? Like we did when we did Lady, we did Lady Smith Village, Mike and I, together, okay? And we went around circles, 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 okay? And we kept asking, can we see this? Can we see this? I'm just wondering if we're gonna, if this is the kind of thing we're gonna hope to approve, right? Are we gonna ask them to put in front of us based on this application?
Mm-hmm.
Some kind of architectural design. I don't care whether we like it or don't. I'm not asking about co-op, I'm just saying. I got, it, it appears to me is that we don't want just a big block building standing there that looks like every other block building in the whole country. That, that's what I'm seeing in here. Am I right in that?
Yes, y- you're right. We, we don't, a- and I actually have a, 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 a photo that I copied of a big block building. Actually, it's, it's poured concrete of not only the building, but, but the security wall around it. So it, it's, it's a very monolithic structure.
Well, see, I've done a couple of those.
Which we don't want.
I've done a couple of those in, in the city of Fredericksburg, so I can only tell you. I mean, I was forced to do it because that's what my client wanted. Um, I afforded as much as I could, but it was their dollar. And they said, no, this is what we wanted. And I said, okay, as long as I get paid, if that's what you want. It's ugly, but that's what you want.
Yes, sir. So the idea is, yes, we would have architectural standards. Um, I, I think the, the question is, do we, um, do we require that submission with a, with a zoning application? Or do we write the standards in a manner, um, that w- we're giving the overall guidance as to what we want the, you know, we overall guidance in terms of the standards that gets submitted with a site plan. So I think we could talk about that. If that, if it's option two, then these need to be beefed up some more to, to, to give more guidance to the applicants.
That's what I'm saying, okay? Not as, as I look at this, and I have done some of these ugly block buildings, guys. Um, I just think that we would like to beef this up a little bit to say, hey, guys, we don't want just a big block building with no windows and no doors and no overhangs. I'm just, Mike, I'm just saying.
I understand.
That's what we're.
We've got a, a number of examples that we've, uh, um, cop- uh, copied from the internet, what they can look like.
We did that when we did Lady, when we did, we did Lady Smith Village, that's what we did.
Yes.
We showed the applicant, this is what we think we would like it to look like. Just to give it a direction. We didn't say that's exactly what it had to be. We didn't say, this is exactly the color that we wanted it to be. But we gave at least a direction, 'cause right now, as I look at this, this is kind of vague, being very honest about it, okay? And I'm not saying that the applicant can't live with this, but I think if I was going to do this, I would like to include some pictures or drawings or things like that.
Examples.
Examples, right, yep.
And I think it's appropriate to include that. So, um, I, I, I hope you'll work with us on that and, and beef that up a little bit. I think that would be.
No problem at all, Mike. No problem at all.
All right, commissioners, uh, do we grant authorization for a, to advertise for a public hearing April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
We're gonna do a public hearing.
You are hereby authorized.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Um, I have a question for Mr. Frederick Le- uh, Lees. I've, um, attended several board supervisor's meetings in the past, and during any and all matters, the public's been allowed to speak if they want to. We've never done that.
No, ma'am. You actually do not have a public comment period.
Okay. Is that something we're allowed to have, though?
Yes, you could amend your bylaws to include a public.
So it needs to be in our bylaws?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the board of supervisors at seven thirty PM, uh, they have their public comment section.
Yeah.
They, they call it public comment versus any and all, but, um, yes, they, they have a timeframe where they, um, allow, uh, public comment.
Oh, yeah, I've commented before, before, um, and, you know, as you know, I've attended. So that is why we don't, because it's not in our bylaws, but they have it in their bylaw.
Uh, yeah, and I think historically, um, as a governing body, the, the public comment period, um, allows citizens to speak on issues that aren't necessarily subject to public hearing or on the agenda. So they, they could bring an issue to the attention of the board.
That's usually what it is.
Yeah, um, here, um, and I think public comment is a good idea. You just don't want it to turn to a public hearing where you, you're start, you're talking, you've got an item, you've already had the public hearing on it.
Which you could or could not.
Yeah, you'd ha- you'd have to, to, to put some.
I was just, I had just, I had been meaning to bring it up, just wondering why we didn't have that.
Yeah, certainly we can add that to, to, um, your, um,
Bylaws.
Bylaws and, and the, the meeting schedule and, and.
Yeah, and here again, you, you restrict it to anything other than an item that's on the agenda.
Right, so if somebody wanted to come to you and suggest an ordinance amendment or, or whatever, uh, that, that would be an opportunity to do that.
That may be something we wanna consider for the future.
It's a good idea. Anything further? Is there a motion to adjourn until April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three? Seconded?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay? Hearing none, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Bill?